Planning Commission meeting, March 6, 2014. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number and item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. Another housekeeping item, cell phones and electronic devices need to be turned off at this time. If anyone needs to take a cellphone call, please step out into the hall and take care of it there. Thank you. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action on all the consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commission member, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council, and the city council will make the final decisions with the exception of the following item. Item 313PD057. The Rapid City Planning Commission's action on this item is final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Planning Commission and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. And I have speaker requests for item number six to be removed from the consent calendar. Any other items? Okay. Motion to approve items one through eight with the exception of number six.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
You need to ask the audience if they would like to remove any additional items.
Oh, any additional items from the audience? Okay. Motion's been made to approve items one through eight with the exception of item number six. Is there a second? That could be Karen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items one through eight have been approved. Item number six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number six is a preliminary subdivision plan to create 19 additional lots as a part of the Elks Country Estates development. These particular lots are located at the southern terminus of Jolly Lane and a butt along the H lot that was previously secured for Minnesota Street. And with that, I will show you some slides. And while I do, I'd like to preempt it by saying that yesterday we did receive a letter from Mr. Ed Carpenter representing David Lamb, and the letter indicated that they had concerns with any exceptions that may be requested to waive the requirement to improve Minnesota Street and the section line highway. They are here today and would like to speak to the item. I thought I would just introduce it to you before I turn the mic over to them. The shaded area is, the hatched area is the area of the lots. There are 19 lots, and as I indicated previously, it is at the southern terminus of Jolly Lane. The aerial of the property, you can see along the southern lot line, the H lot that was previously secured for Minnesota Street. To date, that street has not been constructed. It is classified as an arterial street on the major street plan. The applicant has requested an exception to waive the requirement to build it at this time. The requirement would be to build just that portion that abuts the lot line shown in yellow. Staff has denied the request. The applicant has appealed it to the city council. It will be heard by Public Works Committee this coming Tuesday, and that would be the 11th of March. To date, we have not received an exception request to waive the requirement for the section line highway, which is along the east lot line. It's my understanding that the parties in question are reviewing whether or not it would be appropriate to vacate it, or whether or not it would be appropriate to waive those Again, the layout of the lots in respect to Minnesota Street, which is here, and to the section line highway, again, which is along that east lot line. This is looking south along Jolly Lane. Snow covers it up, but other than sidewalks, that road is currently built to city street design standards. Looking north on Jolly Lane, looking to the west of the site, looking into the site where the lots would be developed. This is looking somewhat west along what would be Minnesota Street. It's just to the left of that fence, the iron fence that you can see in the forefront. And then this is looking somewhat east. You can kind of see where it's been rough cut, where Minnesota Street would go. And this is looking north at the southern terminus of the project. With that, I would turn it over to Mr. Carpenter, and if you would like a slide put up, let me know, and I would certainly put it up for you.
What, is this one the one you want? Right there? Okay. There you go. And then you can just draw with this tip right here.
Good morning, and thank you for hearing us, and thank you for what you're doing to try to keep up with our city's burgeoning growth. A good thing, but you have to deal with a lot to execute that in good style, and we have a similar interest because we're fronting our main expansion vector for about five miles there and trying to preserve and create the best future city infrastructure in what probably will be the center of the city unless you move the Black Hills. What's at issue today is that we have the ongoing development at Elks Country Estates, and we work with them and anybody else down there we can for the comprehensive planning needs for infrastructure, drainage, streets, and so on. And we're trying to work it out with the city and with other people who are interested in it, the school system. It now has 80 acres of property right adjoining this road issue that we're talking about, and also needs to have the right kind of access in there in the future when they execute their east side school complex there. So what we're hoping to do is see that Minnesota Street is retained as that major arterial that in effect will be the same feature as St. Joe and Main Street for the future center of Rapid City. Omaha Street will be Omaha Street, and what's down that whole main area that's the largest piece of open land adjoining Rapid City is Minnesota Street and the other requirements for drainage and access. And the issue that relates to that other than Minnesota Street being set up to be the full-size street that it should be is that the section line vacation that's being requested starts limiting access for the future, to some extent for us, but also it sets up a situation where city requirements for two points of access for emergency services and the like may not be available, and that's a big limitation for future infrastructure as well. So we were hoping to work with the planners we've been working with and with you to assure that we do have another access point engineered into there if there were going to be a change to the section line. That's the simple situation in this case. And anything else that you want to ask me about it or that I can explain further, please let me know.
Are there any questions? Vicki?
I think the comments that David made today are valid. Certainly connectivity to the adjacent properties are an important aspect anytime we look at subdivision of this raw land in this area. What we've brought before you today is a recommendation to approve the preliminary subdivision plan, and stipulations number five and six, I believe, identify the section line highway and Minnesota Street. And they read that either they be built to city street design standards or exceptions be obtained, and a reminder that the exceptions will be reviewed by staff. Minnesota Street has been denied. It'll be a determination now made by council, and if the section line highway exception does come forward, and staff again, now knowing that the adjacent property owner has some issue with waiving that improvement as well, I would assume that's going to go on to council for their consideration, and we certainly welcome Mr. Lamb back at those meetings to have that discussion again. In the meantime, as we look at the master plan for Elks Country Estates, one of the things that we will keep in mind is that that connectivity to the east, to Mr. Lamb's property, is something that we must ensure so that as he develops, he is not shut down by the 40-unit rule.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple other speaker request forms. Kyle?
Could I make one more comment?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, the point of bringing, I'm Ed Carpenter. Work at Custel Park Law Firm, and the point of bringing this to you today is that if something is done to the section line, the secondary access could change this layout flat. That's the point of making you aware of this at this particular point in time, and there have been some negotiations going between the developer and Lamb's.
There is an alternative there that will provide for that secondary access as well, and that's what we're trying to work out jointly at this time, we hope. So that's why we hope to keep things open so that we don't lose any of the access to that area that will be required in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kyle McNaber?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Kale McNibow. I work at Spurley Consulting for the civil engineers in charge of the design for Elks Country Estates, 821 Columbus Street, Suite 1, Rapid City. I represent the petitioner in this matter. That's Elks Country Estates. So what you're looking at, the preliminary subdivision plan, and in particular, the item that is up for discussion here. Vicki, do you think I could back up and get the aerial up, please? Sorry, I shouldn't have.
No, that's okay.
Where's the stylus? Yeah, so the premise, I think, of the argument that was being made is the discussion of the exception to construct this part of Minnesota Street. That's an exception. That has been made, has been denied by staff, has been referred to the Public Works Agenda for the 11th, and as I understand it, they're in the process of reviewing that, and they'll make the recommendation that goes forward to council. So really, the recommendation that we're looking for today is to either approve or deny the staff report, and the owner's not in opposition to the staff report. Either he'll provide the construction drawings for Minnesota Street, which are, but I would say the 95% completion, or he will apply for the exception. He's applied for the exception, it's been denied, they go to Public Works. So I believe that what's before the planning commission this morning is to either approve it or deny it. So we're not asking for any sort of a line item correction to the staff report. We'd be satisfied if it was approved as drafted by the staff. And with that, I'd be willing to answer any questions you had regarding that. Otherwise, I'll, I guess, we'll regroup and see this thing at Public Works next Tuesday.
Anyone have questions? Thank you very much. Oh, Eric?
I'm sorry, Vicki, if you would, the exceptions, has the section line highway exception been applied for at this point?
Not to date.
Okay. And the Minnesota Street one is applied for, but it's just sort of ahead of this meeting, or not ahead, but behind this meeting.
Yeah, they submitted that with the application. Staff denied it, and then they quickly put it on the very next Public Works Agenda, which is this coming Tuesday. So as this item goes forward to city council, the discussion about Minnesota Street will be on that same agenda. So that'll work out well.
Big picture, though, the connectivity, Minnesota Street connectivity is not really in question here. It's really just the construction of this sort of small section of the, there's a gap between what's been constructed so far and what would be constructed under this.
Well, you know, and there's always some concern by staff that Minnesota Street, if we don't start getting these improvements now, you defer the cost of that to property to the south, and then it becomes a factor of it's difficult to balance that cost because you've already sold the lots to the north. I think it's important to note that Mr. Carpenter's point being that he's concerned that if the section line highway exception should come forward, and it should be granted, then he wants to continue negotiations with this, with Elks Country Estates to ensure that there's a second point of access to his, to Mr. Lamb's property to the east. The one thing I do want to remind the planning commission is that there was a master plan for Elks Country Estates that was submitted years ago, and this is in compliance with that master plan. And so it's difficult for us to go back now on something that we had previously approved. Mr. Lamb does own a substantial amount of property to the east of this, of Elks Country Estates, and, you know, it is anticipated that there will be additional streets and connectivity constructed through his property as well. We are always open for negotiations between property owners, and if they should come up with something as a negotiation in obtaining their support for waiving the improvement on the section line highway, certainly staff would entertain whatever that compromise would be. For today, our recommendation is to approve the preliminary subdivision plan with the stipulations as identified. It leaves the discussion of whether or not these two right-of-way should be improved to the city council for discussion.
Karen?
Thank you. Vicki, I have a question for you. I understand the Minnesota Street issue, and that's really something that the council will take into account. The north-south access, there is a discussion about the east, north-south access to the east, that's a section line also that has not been, am I understanding, that's a section line that has not been asked for an exception at this point? That part right there, yeah?
Right. That is the section line highway.
Okay. If they do submit that as an exception and it is granted, the Jolly Lane would be the issue that would connect Jolly Lane to Minnesota for Mr. Lamb. If that is not granted, and the council does not grant that exception to waive that or to remove that section line highway, then that, this plot would have to be changed. And I understand, I think that's what Mr. Carpenter was talking about, that the layout of those houses would have to change to get that road in there to the east. Is that correct?
I would assume that if the section line highway was not vacated or exception granted, they would come in through the plan development and ask for a reduction in the setbacks to that lot line, or to that front lot line then, and it wouldn't necessarily reconfigure the lots, but they would probably ask for a reduction in that setback.
Okay. And to date, they have not asked for that exception at this point?
Not to this point. My understanding is that they have been visiting with Mr. Lamb on whether or not it would be best to vacate the section line highway. Through the plan development, however, if they left it intact for Mr. Lamb someday to construct if he so chooses, or to leave it as a utility and pedestrian access corridor, through the plan development, they could come forward and ask for a reduction to the setback to a section line highway. Because as you know, section lines are 66 feet in width, 33 feet on either side, plus a 25-foot setback. So you have a 58-foot setback in your rear yard, and that does seem excessive. In the past, the city always took the position, if you're not going to construct the section line highway, vacate it. But that's not been the case anymore. Our position has been leave the section line highway, if at all possible, for anyone's future plans, and we will support reductions in setbacks, as usually are your rear lot lines. You already have the 33-foot highway, and then we reduce that rear yard setback typically pretty close to that 33 feet so that they do have a good building envelope on every lot.
Okay. That answers my question. My concern was just sometimes we get development and we squeeze it so tight that the lots then become so narrow and so small that, you know, creates a problem in the future, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes, I have a question. The issue of evacuation due to a fire, has that been reviewed, and what's the status of that?
We do have streets that extend to the west that will take us out through Elks Crossing and out onto Elk Vale Road. These additional lots then do not exceed that 40-unit rule, so it does meet the fire department's concerns for emergency ingress and egress. The master plan for Elks Country Estates will have additional east-west street connections to the west through this area. So again, we will not exceed the 40-unit rule without having an additional point of access. But that's a good question.
Any other questions or comments?
The one thing I wanted to note or clarify is that the mention was made of Jolly Lane, which does have some future planning routes showing that going to the east, but I wanted to note the important point is that the new Rapid City School site of 80 acres that we worked here recently to make a grant of and work with the city to acquire some land is now where that Jolly Lane access would go. It wouldn't go to the rest of the property, and what would happen to that access after it goes to the city land, or the city school system land, is not able to be determined as having anything to do with these other issues that we're addressing. So even though Jolly Lane did have a future connection to the east as a potential extension, at this point, it no longer goes to our property. It goes to the new Rapid City School System property. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion's been made and seconded to approve item number six, 14PL007. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We'll go to the consent calendar. Item number nine, number 13PD049, Copper Hill Ridge subdivision.
Item number nine is the final plan development for the Chapel Valley Water Tower. Since last time, this was on the planning commission agenda on January 23rd, the applicant has met with staff and with the neighborhood, and has revised the plans to move the water tower to the south and up the hill, and decrease the height of the water tower from 57 feet to 36 feet. Let me take you through some slides. This shows the new location, but I'll get to the next one, hopefully. The majority of the neighbors, which had indicated opposition to the tower since the revised plan showing it 80 feet to the south and higher up the hill, and working with the neighbors on identifying what type of screening and berm would be used to provide a buffer, the majority of the neighbors have now indicated concurrence or approval of the revised plans. Here we have elevation showing basically the change from 57 feet to 36 feet, and location of a berm and an optional fence for additional buffering. With all this, staff recommends approval with the stipulations as noted in the staff report.
Are there any audience questions? Any commission questions?
Got a quick question.
We have a quick question. Andy?
So everybody's okay at 35 feet?
36 feet.
Located? Yeah? Okay, great. I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item number nine, number 13PD049. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 10, number 14PL004, Rainbow Ridge subdivision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to add before I introduce item 10 to you that thanks go out to those that were involved in the previous item. Took a lot of work, a lot of discussion, and Fletcher facilitated the whole thing, and it certainly, you saw the, some of the animosity that we felt from some of the writings, and thank you, Fletcher, that was a job well done, and a long, a lot of long meetings in getting that done, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Item number 10 is a preliminary subdivision plan to create 19 lots as another phase of Rainbow Ridge. This is located in the northwestern portion of our city, west of Haynes Avenue. We really don't have any issues with this one. It's on the non-consent because Eric Braun needs to abstain from voting, but it is well laid out. I will very, very quickly run through the slides for you. I say that, but my computer's not letting me do that. I shouldn't have used the word quickly. The, we'll just do it off of this one slide, then. There are going to be three lots here and 16 lots. This is Elma Street. This is Gladys Street. These are going to be beautiful lots. There we go. That's Elma Street. It's got to pause, and every time I hit this thing, you know, like when you're at an elevator and you just keep hitting it thinking it'll come faster? So I'm jumping ahead on slides. These are residential lots. As you can see, the train is challenging, but the views up there are absolutely breathtaking. Single-family residential homes, this is looking back down onto some of the existing development that is there. These are nice, single-family homes. We are recommending that this item be approved with the stipulations as outlined in the staff report. staff report.
Motion's been made for approval and seconded for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With Eric's exception, abstention. Not exception. Thank you. Number 11, number 14 UR 002.
Thank you. Item number 11 is 14 UR 002. A major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow an electronic message center on approximately 0.56 acres of property located at 502 Mountain View Road. This is also known as the Sophie Jo's Car Wash. On June 6th of 2013, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow the redevelopment of the property, of the car wash that was previously located on the property. One of the stipulations of approval for the car wash required that a major amendment to the conditional use permit be obtained for the addition of LED signage on the property. The applicant is now proposing an LED sign, or message center to be located on the existing pole sign, located on the western edge of the property, and as such, has submitted this major amendment. Let me take you through some slides. Hopefully, we'll see how this works. Let's look at the property. Never mind this bar through the middle. We're talking about this property right here. Aerial view of the same. This is showing the previously existing car wash on the property. The site has been redeveloped. See, it's thinking about this. Okay. Current site of the, or current site plan showing the development on the property. The sign is located right, was located right there. This is a look at what the proposed sign will look like. This is the LED portion. Let me give you some information on that. The LED sign measures 46 inches by 94 inches, totaling 30.13 square feet of LED signage. Rapid City Sign Code permits a maximum of 60 square foot of LED signage on the property. Plans show that the proposed signs are minimum of 10 feet above grade, and the total height of the sign is 21.84 feet. A maximum 35-foot tall pole sign is permitted on the property. The South Dakota Department of Transportation, or the, it should be noted that the applicant has been working with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to ensure that the sign does not encroach into state right-of-way. The signed, proposed LED sign complies with all the requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Some shots on the property. There's the sign posted actually on the pole sign that is being proposed to be altered. I'll look at Mountain View Road to the south. Mountain View Road to the north. You can see the sign there, the Coca-Cola signs, the currently existing sign that's going to be altered. A look of the development on the property. This is a look from the railroad crossing on Mountain View Road, north towards Omaha Street, to get a look at the distance between the major roadway and this location of the sign. And this is another view from the intersection of Mountain View and Omaha to the proposed car wash. The location of the proposed LED sign is right there. One more view of the property and the sign located on the property. It should be noted that the proposed LED sign would be permitted as designed in the general commercial district. It's the existence of this conditional use permit for the car wash use on the property that's requiring this major amendment to allow the LED signage. At the request of the planning commission, staff has brought all LED sign requests located within planned developments or conditional use permits to the planning commission for their determination. However, based on previous direction from the planning commission, if a proposed LED sign complies with all the requirements of the Rapid City Sign Code, then staff may support the request. The car wash is located within an established commercial corridor. It is not adjacent to or in proximity to any residential development. The proposed LED sign meets all the requirements of the Rapid City Sign Code. If the planning commission should determine that the location is appropriate for the proposed LED sign, then staff recommends that the major amendment to the conditional use permit be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Are there any questions? Dennis?
Did you indicate in your description there that the Coca-Cola sign would be eliminated, and the LED sign would be replacing that?
Yes, and if we can get the slide presentation to cooperate, I'll give you a better look at what's being proposed. So we have the site, the existing Coca-Cola sign. They're going to take that existing sign, and then cantilever the LED sign and the Sophie Jo's Car Wash sign, which is not an LED, that's just an, the Sophie Jo's Car Wash is just an interior illuminated cabinet sign. Cantilever them into the property, and that's a depiction of what it should look like.
And that's no higher than what currently exists?
That's correct.
Okay.
Karen?
Thank you. I don't have a question of anybody, I don't think. Just a statement that says, I'm, I think the sign looks better. It's cantilevered in. It's not as close to the road. I appreciate that, and I think that's a really good thing. The height is okay with me. But I do have a concern with the LED. I'm just, until we have a handle on our LED signage and can control it better, I'd just hate to see one more LED sign up that is, has the possibility of scrolling and making all the different flashing things. And this is a busy section of town. A lot of cars go through there, and to have any distraction at all, just, it, it, it just does not set well with me. I know we have a car wash on Highway 79, or Campbell Street, I guess is the right term, and they said they would never do anything like that, and there's constantly changing things going on in that sign. And this is a fairly large LED sign. It's not small, and I have visions of it being very distracting to the driver. And so I'm going to vote no on this, and I'm sure the motion will be to approve this, but I just want everyone to know that I will be voting no. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? If not, I entertain a motion. Motion has, motion's been made and seconded for item number 11. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposition. Item number 12. PB 003.
Item number 12 is a major amendment to allow a, to a plan development, to allow caretaker's unit to be used by the owners of the Creamery Building located at 201 Main Planning commission has seen previous applications for church and a brewery located in the building. Those previous applications reduced parking from 128 required to zero. The caretaker's unit, which is being proposed to be used by the owners of the building and is being converted from a portion of the owner's suite, will increase parking by two spaces, and as such, this major amendment has been submitted to reduce the minimum required parking from 130 to zero. So that's an increase of two spaces, but because the proposed unit will only be used by the owner of the building, there shouldn't be an increase in, or any, or it shouldn't create any additional parking demand. And as such, staff recommends that that exception to the parking be granted. Any change in use that increases the parking will require a major amendment to the plan development. As such, staff recommends that the plan development be approved with stipulations as noted in the staff report.
I have a question of staff, not necessarily for this particular item, but items in the original town site in general. In the, in the time I've been on the planning commission, we've approved several projects in the original town site that are using on-street parking to, to make up the deficit in their available parking, and I just wondered if anyone keeps track of how many of those on-street parking spaces are being claimed by different businesses? I understand the problem downtown of parking, but do we have like 1,000 parking spots, and we have businesses claiming 1,500 of them, or 75 of them, or do we know what the, do we know what the claimed parking spaces for all of the businesses downtown might be?
Madam Chair?
Vicki?
Obviously, we do have records of all variances and reductions in parking that are approved by the city in some format, either through a variance from zoning board of adjustment, or a plan development that's reviewed and approved by the planning commission. I don't know that we have a chart and we tally the number. I think we look at it a little more differently than that. There, it's kind of a gray area where the central business district stops and the general commercial district starts. Staff has always taken the position that there should be no additional central business district based on the fact that parking is an issue, and we've had property owners come in and make the argument that the streets are designed exactly the same. There's the same parking allowed along their storefronts as what would be allowed in the central business district, and the only one that is hurt from the lack of parking is them, because if their customers can't get to them, then they'll continue to drive on down the street. And this is really a part of where that marriage comes together. So we certainly understand what your comment is. We are aware of the reductions in parking that are requested by these general commercial properties that lie within close proximity to central business district. They do seem to police themselves in that many of them sometimes will have tenant spaces that will remain open for some time, because there's been a history where there's been insufficient parking. So we're hoping as that continues on, we'll see some of these general commercial sites redevelop and maybe even provide additional off-street parking and become parking lots. And we've, we've got one across from the courthouse that's in essence, serving that function today instead of being redeveloped with a commercial building. So I appreciate your comments. We're on the same page with you, and it is something that is kind of monitoring itself, but something that we certainly need to continue to look at as we have additional requests to allow the on-street parking to serve as parking similar to the central business district.
Karen?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the remodeling part. The first floor on the west side is going to be remodeled for the caretaker's section?
It's on the second floor.
Okay, there was a picture of the first floor on-
It was the floor plan that was submitted by the applicant, just showing what's currently located in the building.
So the first floor already has a bedroom in it and stuff?
I don't believe so. It could also be that the applicant mislabeled, or it was mislabeled.
Okay, so it's just the second floor, and it's the interior-only part of it?
Yes, part of the owner's suite within the building.
Gotcha, okay. I approve that. I think that's a good use of that, that building. So I make a motion to approve with the stipulations.
We have another question.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on Jan's comment. It seems very significant that we'd go from over 100 parking spots being required to zero, and yet we've added a brewery element, which was going to require quite a few parking spots. We went ahead and took a deep breath and approved that one. Now we've got another request for somebody that's going to be living there, and we're not, we're still not requiring any parking spots. And I, you know, I can just see people driving another three or four blocks to the east to park in that area in order to find someplace to go for downtown. Why can't we have at least two parking spots?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vicki?
Completely understand what you're saying, and when we brought the brewery forward for consideration, we certainly did so by preempting it if the planning commission so determines it's appropriate to reduce that parking. And looking at the operation plan and what had been there in the past, and how the on-street parking did work, you did determine that it was appropriate to allow a reuse of that tenant finish within the building for the brewery. When we brought this one forward today, I believe that Fletcher has it so structured, so that you, you've got to be someone that's operating one of these businesses to stay there. You're already there. It's not going to trigger any additional parking. This can't be rented out. You're the caretaker of the property. You're operating one of the businesses, or we would have brought you a recommendation to deny. Does that help what your concern is about two additional, because there, the analysis that was brought forward by the applicant, I don't see him in the audience today, is that it wouldn't trigger any additional parking. They're already there, operating a business.
Andy has a question, unless-
Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, it just seems like we're kicking the can down the street, and that we have a parking issue for that whole downtown area, and it is going to develop to the east as well as to the west. And I think we need to take another look at the activity and what we're going to be doing. And unless it's put into the major plan for additional parking that I haven't seen totally consummated yet, I have a lot of difficulty with this.
Question. Obviously, this is not in the downtown business district, because in the downtown business district, no, if my understanding is correctly, no onsite parking is required. So this falls within that, within that area that does not require onsite parking? Is that?
No, it is in the general commercial district.
Okay.
East of the central business district, and that kind of went to my previous discussion about that marriage between where the central business district stops and where the general commercial district starts. When the streets are designed the same, they come to us with the argument, if it's working for the central business district, why can't it work for us? We still have the same foot traffic. Our customers still use the same on-street parking, or they just, they don't stop. So we kind of police ourselves. But Dennis makes a good point, and it's something that, you know, we turn to transportation staff all the time as they're monitoring movements, whether it be parking, pedestrian, or vehicular throughout our city. And it's, and it's something that we're concerned of, too. And it goes to the need that the city has for additional parking structures to service our entire downtown. Dan's over there smiling right now. And this, this, this is a great conversation for us to have at planning commission. I really appreciate you guys not just stamping this, but wanting this discussion, because I want to remember this and remind the next person that comes in, adjacent to the central business district, but within the general commercial requiring that off-street parking, that regardless of how small the request, it continues to contribute to an existing issue that we have. If this were anything other than a caretaker's unit, we wouldn't be bringing you a recommendation to approve. And probably, we should have had a better conversation when the brewery came in.
I got a follow-up comment. So I appreciate Dennis's concern. I look at it a little bit differently. I look at if it's a place where somebody's living, that's probably one vehicle for 750 square foot, whereas in if it was a 750-square-foot office space, you could have two or three employees plus two or three customers coming at any given time. So the density of the requirement for the parking, from my interpretation of the use, would actually be less. But your points are valid, and it is part of the ongoing discussion. So I appreciate that.
Karen?
Thank you. I, I think this property is a difficult property to look at. When we looked at it in the past, there's no space there for additional parking. There's no space there for landscaping, all the rules that we would require in a normal general commercial area. And this is a, this is being brought to us because of the trigger of making this a caretaker spot in this, in this building. And as Vicki said, those folks are there already. They're on the second floor. They're, they have their office up there. They're there a lot during the day. I've visited with Ms. Sandra McNeely, and she's there already. And, but because- But because of the fact that we're requiring two spaces for a caretaker, we're adding that parking. And it's, to me, it's more of a technical thing than it is reality. And in reality, I don't think we're creating any more additional spaces. As Vicky said, I think if we were concerned, we would have been more concerned with the brewery when that went in. But we've had a lot of businesses there before, from t-shirt places to retail shops and the beanery down there. And it's worked down there because of the other buildings and the other businesses that are down there. There's enough space to have that on-street parking. It's not ideal, but I think in this case, it works for this particular area. So, I think adding this to the agenda and approving it is wise. Thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, I'll echo one of the things that Karen said. There's a lot of buildings there, including this one, that just do not have room to have parking. They're built out to the edge of their property. And we're going to see a number of these requests on those buildings. And until land has the value downtown where it's worth knocking something down versus trying to remodel it and get the parking, you know, passed through, we're just going to have to deal with this. And I, for me, this is, this is one, all of these in this building that we've seen, the church, the brewery, you know. I don't see any other way than to allow them to use on-street parking versus require off-street because it's just not, it's not feasible at this point to expect, you know, we'd be asking the building to remain empty. And we'd be asking other buildings to remain empty, which I don't think is as good of a, I don't think that's the right side to be on. I'd rather have people downtown looking for parking spots than empty buildings.
Dan.
I just want to point out, I don't object to this item. I think the landowner or the property owner should have a right to do this. I'm just saying, I was just bringing up the question of how many available parking spots are there downtown? And how many are we allotting to the people who have no room on their property to supply parking? And I hope in the future, if items are brought of this nature, that we would at least have some idea of the available parking within two blocks or whatever that isn't claimed by the other people within two blocks. So, thank you.
I think we've had some excellent comments, and I think this is really important to share that we do look in depth at all of our issues. And I do appreciate all the comments. And if you want to make your motion again.
I'll make my motion, too.
Motion's been made and seconded on item fourteen PD-003. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. I appreciate the comments. Item number fourteen UR-003, Rapid City Greenway Track.
Thank you. Item thirteen, fourteen UR-003 is a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow park amenities as a part of the promenade project located on nine-point-four-six acres of property in the Rapid City Greenway tracks, also known as Memorial Park. Let me take you through some slides. On October fourth, two thousand and twelve, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow structures in the flood hazard district. You can see the zoning map here, the property is zoned flood hazard. The project has since been expanded to include some improvements along the south side of Memorial Pond, between Rapid Creek and Memorial Pond, as well as draining, dredging, and rehabilitating Memorial Pond to make it more suitable for wildlife. Now, the applicant is proposing to create some park amenities to be known as legacy commons on the south side of Rapid Creek, just west of the ongoing promenade project. The submitted plans, they were up, would show of the development occurring. Here's the civic center here. So, the promenade is under construction right now through here. So, this is Sixth Street here. The promenade project is coming in right about here. There you go. Through that area. You can see it's a variety of walking paths with a primary pedestrian and bicycle access along the north side with a variety of playground pods, which if the computer cooperates with us, you'll get a chance to look at. Landscaping plan. Here we go. Here's some of the playground pods. Variety of different uses. I should include, too, that there's a use for ADA accessible handicap or playground equipment, as well as, and you can see some of it there, as well as an interactive immersive garden, which would allow people in wheelchairs to wheel themselves up into the plant beds to be able to experience the landscaping and plantings that are as a part of this. You can see some examples of the playground equipment being proposed, as well as the intentions with some of the memorials that are found in Memorial Park, including the Scotty Memorial. That will be the location of that immersive ADA playground and garden experience. The Swan Memorial on the promenade, as well as the legacy sculpture will be just to the east of this. Some views of the property. You can see the sign posted. This is from Omaha Street looking across the property. This is from the location of where the promenade work is currently under construction, looking through the west across where the development will be taking place. You can see Scotty right over here to give you your bearings. A view of the promenade currently under construction. The legacy commons proposal is extending to the west of this location. This is a look at the western edge of the development, looking back towards the east. The orange gates are the promenade. You can see Scotty there to the right, again, for your bearings, to give you an idea of the layout of the property. There would be playground development along this route, and then also along Rapid Creek. And we should note that there is a hundred-year flood plain along the north side of this. None of the structures of development that are being proposed are located within the floodway. So, the applicant will be required to update their flood plain development permit prior to issuance of a building permit. One last look at the property with the sign posted. This is an exciting new addition to the promenade. It's incorporating a lot of the existing elements of the development, along with some new features that will improve the park system. Stipulations of approval will ensure the conditional use permit will address any potential adverse impacts of the development. Adjacent uses on the property are commercial or part of the Rapid City Park system. The site is sufficiently buffered from all adjacent uses. As such, staff recommends that the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow park amenities as part of the legacy commons project be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report. We're available for questions at this time.
Karen.
I do have a couple of questions. There was, in the staff report, it was noted that the Rapid City Parks, not the Parks Department, but the Save Our Parks or the Friends of the Parks, thank you, Friends of the Parks, they had submitted a letter. I didn't see that letter, but can you tell me, were they supportive of this project?
Yes, they were. That letter was actually submitted as a part of the application materials. The Friends of Rapid City Parks noted their support of the proposed improvements.
Okay. And has the Parks, Rapid City Recreation and Parks Department, have they given their approval? Or have they looked at this yet?
They are currently reviewing it. They're continually reviewing this with the applicants as the development continues and plans are firmed up. One of the stipulations of approval is that prior to issuance of a building permit, we do have written concurrence from the Parks and Recreation Department that they're on board with the final design of the park system.
Okay. I have some concern about putting anything in the flood, you know, area that is a memorial park, but I also see the benefits of some of this equipment and some of the things that people can actually use the park a little bit more than just strolling through. And so, it's kind of a mixed bag. But I couldn't tell for sure how far back from Omaha Street the parks items were, those equipment. But I'm assuming it's beyond the, on the north side of one of those sidewalks? Is it north of that Scotty?
This is the landscaping plan, just to give you an idea. Right here is, oh, I keep doing that. Right here is Omaha Street. So, and right here would be Scotty.
Okay.
To give you an idea. So, all the development is occurring north of Scotty. But, so, Scotty to the road would be the absolute minimum that there would be park system in proximity to Omaha Street. Everything else would be occurring north. Now, in terms of the flood plain, and because of the computer acting like computers do, it was difficult to point this out, but this is the location of the flood plain boundary. So, as you can see, none of the structural development that's being proposed is located within that flood plain boundary. It's all been moved outside of it.
Okay. I just had some concerns also about the kids getting too close to Omaha Street. But if it's behind, you know, farther back than that, you know, it's like any other park, you've got to be careful of your kids, I guess. But, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Andy Scuff.
I got a question for the applicant. Definitely in support of the project, but I'm just curious as to why this spot, and maybe not closer to the band shelter or on the other side, similar to what Karen's concerns are about traffic? And it just seems like an odd location, so it'd be interesting to hear why you guys picked this spot.
I'm Pat Wiss, landscape architect and design consultant for Destination Rapid City. This location, we looked at a number of locations on the north side of the creek. There's the pond. And then, there's a lot going on with the civic center and civic center expansion. There's just some unknowns there. And then, this area on the south side, we pulled in, we're quite a ways in from Omaha, a couple hundred feet. We're building some berms, some separation berms, some vegetation along there to help create some separation. And it also, one of the, our goal is to bring people into the park by activities. It's been a passive park, it's worked over the years, but with the growth of the downtown, the expansion of the civic center, this is really, you know, this part of the network of the framework. So, this visually, to draw people, and we're improving the crossing at Omaha Street. So, part of this is to draw, when you're in Main Street Square, you'll be able to see some of these play structures. So, we envision families, they might go in the park to an event, then they might walk up into the park, spend an hour or two in Memorial Park, go back, go to the parking garage, and go home. So, it's part of helping bridging that gap of Omaha Street, too, with a visual connection.
When you think, Dan Sefner, when you think Andy of Main Street Square, and you think of the traffic on Main, and you think of the traffic on Sixth, and you think of the fountain, and you think of the thousands of kids and activity that we have on that corner, and we've been very comfortable with the safety issue there, with the crossing, the new crossing on Omaha Street coming in, with the play areas off a couple hundred, a couple hundred feet, with the berms that kind of separate, you know, I'm a grandpa, and I've got a two-year-old grandson, guess what? Nobody thinks about security anymore than I do. But we've taken a very close look at that. There's a wide-open area there, and it's absolutely beautiful, the trees, even after the storm, there's still good trees there for shade. So, on a hot day, you've got that comfortability. You've got the parents and the grandparents spending time in that area with comfortability and the separation of Omaha Street, even though we know Omaha Street has considerable traffic on it. It's still far enough away that I think you can feel very comfortable being involved with that. And again, the Memorial Pond has been completely redredged. Game Fish and Parks is going to stock that with trout. They're going to be free fishing all summer long at Memorial Park that they've agreed to. It's going to be pretty darned exciting. So, there'll be activity on both sides of Rapid Creek. And I just believe this is going to be very, something very comfortable for the entire community and the visitor.
Eric Brown.
You know, my questions were basically already asked, so I'll just say that I think Rapid City's pretty lucky that DRC's bringing this forward. It looks like an awesome project. Excited to take my kids down there. Just make sure you leave enough green space for the pumpkin catapults.
Don't worry, we've got that figured out.
Part of the plan.
Karen.
Thank you. I just have one more quick question. There's a lot of amenities there for children, and I can't remember what the pictures look like, but will there be someplace for adults, so people that work downtown can go over there for their lunch and just sit there and enjoy the same types of things that kids do?
Absolutely, Karen. That's a very good question. We've got seating areas for the adults. There's actually, what you saw real quickly, is some exercise equipment that's outdoor. So, the play pods are separated by age group. It isn't like how I grew up, where there was a schoolyard and we all ran out and played together. These play pods are separated, so you've got a play area for two, three, and four-year-olds, and then you've got a play area for five, six, seven, eight-year-olds, and you've got a play area. There are five different players, and they're all designed for educational and exercise play. So, it's a combination of everything. There's a lot of work that's gone into this. We've spent, oh my, probably thirteen months in the design stage with this and worked with a company called LSI out of Minneapolis. We're making another trip. They're in the final design phase of all the play areas now. And it's all separated. So, when you've got a three- or four-year-old, he's not getting, or she's not getting run over by a thirteen-year-old. So, it's all separated for that, and that really is the design behind it. They're actually doing an international program and study with this program because it's one of the first ever done, and we're fortunate enough to have it in Rapid City. There's different ones in different communities, but nothing like this. So, it really is something that's on the cutting edge. We've worked very close with Parks and Recs. This presentation has been done to Parks and Recs. Jeff Beagle and I meet consistently, along with Alex, on the design and the layout and everything that's happening through Parks and Recs. So, we've covered every base that we believe we can up to this point to move this whole thing forward. And I'm like Eric, I'm pretty excited to see this because we're going to have something that the visitor is going to want to say, wow, we've got to spend another day. And the local community is going to have a place in Memorial Park to enjoy. I mean, there's Wi-Fi, there's the creek, Rapid Creek will be lit at night, it'll be safe, there's eighty-eight new trees going into the promenade. This is not just, this is just a total enhancement of the entire Memorial Park area. It's just, it's going to be very stimulating for the entire community.
Thanks for that clarification. That's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Excuse me, Amanda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan, just for clarification, Karen's question concerned people who were working downtown being able to go over and enjoy the park. And if my memory serves me correctly, I believe you've got seating capabilities in the promenade itself.
We do. There are seating capabilities on the bridge, there are seating capabilities around the pond, yeah, there are seating capabilities, there'll be seating capabilities in legacy commons play areas. There's seating areas throughout the entire, throughout the entire area.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we had that as well in our record.
It's, the comfortability factor is tremendous. It's going to be very good.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're on to discussion items. Anyone have any discussion items?
Madam Chair, on your agenda today, we have Wade coming forward to present to you on the recent ruling on the casino lawsuit and pending ordinance. After he's finished, I would like to visit with you folks briefly about allowing pet stores in the central business district. And then, I believe Patsy also would like to visit with you about a third item.
Good morning. I know some of you, I'm Wade Nyberg, I'm Assistant City Attorney. I haven't actually dealt with the planning department on a regular basis since I've been here, which... which has been about five years, so I'm stepping into Carla's shoes now while she's out and happy to be working with the folks in planning for a change, so I hope the public works. People don't take that poorly, but. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we're working on with the casino issue. The decision was linked, and there's some other information that was linked with the agenda. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at that. Basically, we've had the same issue in a, in a couple of cases now. They've both gone to court and we've lost on both accounts. What our, our current ordinance does, I guess to take a step back, in order to get a, a video lottery license, you need to have a, an alcohol license. And so, we, we really regulate the alcohol, we don't regulate the, the video lottery so much. We're, we're kind of limited in what we can do with that. And there's been, I guess there's been a lawsuit with the city of Sioux Falls that they, they tried to include video lottery casinos in their zoning ordinance, just general zoning regulations on that, and that was thrown out by the South Dakota Supreme Court. So, we're, we're a little bit limited in that area. So, we really, what we look at is the alcohol, the alcohol use. What our ordinance does is it, it starts by taking away all discretion. It says the, that a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcohol use shall be issued. And then it gives back a little bit of limited discretion. There's four things in there, criteria. One is the proximity to schools, parks, things of that nature, churches. The next, there are a couple of those two, I know some of you are familiar with this, the, the two different criteria. One is buffering and separation, the other is undue concentration. And we've basically had one case on each of those now and, and lost both. The last one is the other conditional use permit criteria. It goes back to the conditional use permit criteria for any other use on review. So, the, the buffering and the undue concentration, basically what we are looking at when we're challenged in court is the judge looking for evidence to support a decision. And a lot of times, we have people from the neighborhood coming in and expressing their opinions about it's, there's too many together because they're, you know, whatever the proximity is. It, it, it comes down to a judge looking at it and wanting more than neighborhood outcry, basically. And I think the, the idea there is that that's to be expected, and so there should be something more objective to look at that shows if they're within so many feet, there's a, some sort of study to show traffic increases this much, that type of thing. And so, that was one of the reasons in this recent case, buffering was really the issue. It was denied based on the buffering. It was across the street from a residential neighborhood. And I think basically the position of the city was that, the planning commission and the council as well, it, it got appealed through council, is that the street wasn't enough of a separation. And what really hurt us in that case, I think the most, was the casino that was adjacent. It was right next door, basically. It had been issued a conditional use permit and been operating for a few years. And so, really, when the judge looks at that, it's, it's sort of an issue of, well, you, you granted this one in the same neighborhood, the same street separation. And so, now your, your reason for denying is that it's not sufficiently buffered, it's not sufficiently separated, but it's the same street, the same neighborhood. And so, that's a little bit of a, a tough thing to overcome. Anyway, also, what we've looked at then in the past, we looked at this after the MG Oil one on Haynes, and there was an ordinance amendment that came forward, and that was linked as well. There's a, a map linked, and there were other maps with different sized buffers. Basically, the, the idea of that ordinance was to, instead of saying sufficient buffering, which really leaves it up in the air, is to put a, make a finding, the, basically the city council would say, it has to be at least 250 feet. That's what we're gonna call sufficient, and that's, you know, after taking everything into consideration, we think that's reasonable and that's effective. So, that was, that was the ordinance that was proposed. It, it didn't end up being approved. It was continued a couple of times. There was a lot of discussion, there was opposition from casino owners. And I don't know if we had all the minutes or anything linked, but there is a, there's a significant amount of discussion, a lot of concerns. One of those being that this is a, it's a legal business, and we understand that a lot of people don't necessarily like it or don't want it in their backyard, so to speak. But it's, it's somewhat, it's not popular, I guess, but, but it is legal. And we are somewhat limited by state laws to what we can do with it. So, generally, those were the, the concerns against this ordinance. So, we're taking a look at that again. We still have some, some work to do before we bring it forward, but we wanted to give you a heads up that that's gonna be a, a point of discussion. And I would welcome, I guess, any comments that you have or any thoughts. We're, we're sort of looking at the, the difference. We talked about including it in the zoning, the use on review ordinances. And this one was actually proposed to go, we have a, a chapter in our, it's really in the licensing, and it was to go along with the alcohol license. And so, that's still something we're, we're looking at and trying to weigh the pros and cons of the different placement, how that might go. But anyway, that's, that's my update. I would be interested if you have, or I would be happy to answer questions, and I'd be interested if you had comments too. I would gladly take those into the discussions on this ordinance.
Eric.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
As far as the buffering goes, is, is the, it doesn't seem like we have a lot of support in regulating this from the state, so to speak. I mean, is there any state laws that would prevent us from developing our own buffering requirement?
We, we have a limited amount of discretion or authority in that, in how we can regulate video lottery. I think as far as separation, that's, that's one of the things we can look at. I believe that's allowed in state law, so I, I think buffering is something we can do. That's, that's doable.
On the other side of the undue concentration, is there, you know, we, most of the work done on that ordinance was strictly buffering, or the proposed ordinance was strictly buffering. Is there any way to clarify the undue concentration? That was, that was my issue with the Indiana Street one. I thought there were too many in a very small area, but, you know, it's, it's opinion, to be honest, 'cause there's no.
Well, and that's, that's a good point. There, part of the issue with that, I think, is that we have, it's a, it's a conditional use in a commercial zone. And so, we have commercial zones in different areas, but that's, that's where they need to go. And so, I think we have to be careful there that we don't say, well, two in a square mile is sufficient concentration, and we don't want any more than that, because then we effectively, that's, that's really one of the issues with this, is that if we make too broad sweeping of a rule, that we, we end up saying, well, we basically got all the casinos we can handle, you can't have any more. We basically exclude any future. And that's, that starts to bring court challenges and a lot closer look, and puts us in a, in a bad position then, because it's, it's looked at as almost pretextual, like, well, you just don't want anymore, and so this is the way you chose to do it. And so, we have to kind of work to, to make it so it's, it's available, but, you know, we, we try to keep the, the buffering from residential areas appropriate.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thanks very much. Item B, pet store information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's come to our attention that there is a pet store in the Central Business District that's been there for a very long time. Currently, pet stores are not permitted or a conditional use in Central Business. But we looked at whether or not it may be appropriate. That's an area that encourages pedestrian traffic. We see it oftentimes in communities where you're walking along and families walk into a pet store and buy a puppy, and whether or not it would be appropriate in our Central Business District is something that we wanted to review with you today and to see if there were some support in bringing for, forward an ordinance amendment that would allow a pet store in the Central Business District as a conditional use. The definition of a pet store says that it's for the sale of animals and their accessory product. It does not allow boarding or kenneling for compensation. In addition, the conditional use permit process would allow us to look at hours of operation, disposal of the waste, noise, odor, and most appropriately, it would look to, let us look to see what the adjacent uses are. As an example, if we had a property downtown and it had an outdoor patio, and there was a vacancy in the building next door, and they wanted a pet store, that probably wouldn't be where we would wanna put one. And, and through the conditional use permit, it allows us to look at that. The individual that's trying to get her license through the Humane Society was surprised that she was in violation. We've talked amongst ourselves, and as planners, we do believe that if we structured an ordinance carefully enough, we could allow the downtown area to support that use with limitations. So, what we're asking for you today is to give us direction where we could go forward and work on an ordinance amendment that would, we, we would bring forward to you in the next meeting or two. If you have any questions, if you have any thoughts about what you would want to see incorporated in that, we'd be glad to visit with you about that.
Karen.
Vicky, I, I think that in some instances, a pet store, you know, is appropriate. I know they had one out at Bacon Park for a while, and I also know there's some neighbors that were adjacent to the pet store that had some issues because snakes got out and got into their area or mice or whatever. And so, if you're going to do an ordinance, I think you'd have to have some really strict guidelines in there that, that would allow for, you know, certain types of pets maybe, or, or, I, I don't know for sure, but I, I just think that there comes with that some, some issues, you know, for pet stores. But on the surface of it, if you're walking downtown and, wow, look at a dog, and your kids are along, I suppose they would like to go in there and look, but I think most people, when they wanna get a pet, don't necessarily go downtown to find one, but, you know, that's just some of the thoughts that I have, so.
Dennis.
I think the other elements of noise and also odor would have to be very strictly defined in regard to the adjacent building, businesses that were there.
I think, I think there's a difference between a pet store and a pet accessory store. I mean, I think if you're just selling dog food, there's probably one set of, you know, to me, that, I don't know why you need a conditional use if you're just selling dog food. But if you're selling dog food and pets, then I think that this is the, that's how this ordinance would be drafted for that combination thereof.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vicky.
Items for animals could be sold right now just as retail, but that housing of animals for the purposes of sale triggers the pet store, which triggers the license through the Humane Society. And they bring that list of all the pet stores that they're aware of in the city to us, and then we review them to ensure that they've gone through the necessary review, and that's how this one got caught. How it got missed for all these years, I don't know, but apparently she's been in numerous locations in the Central Business District, and no one's noticed. The comments you've made today are right in line with what we were thinking too. And whether or not, and it, let's say an ordinance is adopted, whether or not there would be appropriate locations in the Central Business District could be very limiting based on the criteria set forth in that ordinance. So, we appreciate that, and if you will direct us, we'll need a motion to do that. We would work on an ordinance, list that criteria, and bring it back forward for additional comment.
Would you like to make a motion, Tim?
Need a motion. Direct staff to draft an ordinance for your further review to allow a pet store in the Central Business District as a conditional use.
Is there a second? Second by Eric. Motion's been made and seconded to work on the criteria for having a pet store in the Central Business District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One up. All, all motion passed. Thank you. Patsy.
Good morning.
Morning.
You know, we are about to get our most current revised draft copy of our comprehensive plan, and we would like to schedule a special study session with the Planning Commission on the 20th of March so that we can get some group input from you folks before we bring it forward for a public hearing for adoption. There is an off week on the 20th, so we'd like to fill it, if at all possible. And so, we probably, I'm guessing, need a motion to acknowledge that you guys are gonna have a special study session on the 20th.
Motion's been made to acknowledge the special studies, uh, study session on March 20th. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed for a special study session on March 20th. One of our members won't be able to make it.
We'll, that's okay, because on the 13th, we're also gonna schedule some small group sessions. So, if you can't make it on the 20th, we'll be sure to contact you to find out who can make it on the 20th and get you scheduled for the 13th for some group sessions. We anticipate having somebody call all of the folks, including the leadership group, Planning Commission, for those people that can't attend the 20th, and any of the other, the advisory team, and any of the other folks that have participated throughout this process to give them some opportunity in smaller group sessions to comment and make any other further revisions that we need. So, thank you very much. We'll see you on the 20th for sure. I'm guessing seven o'clock here.
Thank you, Patsy. Any other items? If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn. I made the motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second, Andy. Meeting adjourned.